So tonight, we are going to have our elementary showcase and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parker so that he can get it started.
Thank you very much. Great, great to see everybody here. Tonight, you're actually going to hear from our elementary math experts. And this is our second year of using Eureka Math K5. So we've been through a year of it. We're in our second year of implementation. We know a lot more than we did last year at this time. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Marlene Thelon, our K8 Curriculum Coordinator, who will introduce you to the math team that's going to walk us through what does the actual program look like? What are the tips and strategies for parents? What does a lesson look like? And why this is critical in building the math skills for our students K5?
Thanks. Well, welcome, everyone. On behalf of the elementary team that's here tonight, I want to thank you all for coming. And we're really excited. And we're excited because we've been working on this for two years. We started out two years ago and we put a committee together. And some of the people who are here tonight are part of that committee. So I'm going to start by introducing Alicia Nailway. Alicia is our math coach for the elementary level. We also have Kristin Lopa, who is here tonight with us. She is, she wears many hats in the district. She's an assistant principal over at Doolittle and Norton, and she is also a RAM two days a week. And when we say RAM, we're talking about reading and math specialists. But truly, they are sort of like our curriculum assessment and instruction teacher leaders throughout the district. So this is most of that team here tonight. So Kristin. And then we have Jean Monti at Norton, sorry, trying to follow my, from Norton, Mary Bruzek at Doolittle, and Kristin Rayball over at Highlands. So to get this started from two years ago, which I told you was, this was quite a process, we had put together a committee made up of teachers from all over the elementary, from all over the district. So we had representation from kindergarten through 5th grade. And those were representatives from Darcy and Doolittle and Norton at Highlands. So it was quite a collection of people that came together. And what we did was, our task was to find a resource, a math resource, that everyone thought was the best and we could agree on and that we knew was going to be good for our kids. So we met for at least five days, these half-day meetings up at the board, and we evaluated multiple resources. I would say we looked at at least seven. We looked at more than that in our research, but we narrowed it down to seven where we had the kits available, we went through, we looked at them. And Jean Monti can attest to that because she brought, loved some of those kits home. And some of the teachers brought those back to their schools and really looked at them with their colleagues at whatever grade level they were representative of. So the committee came up with their own evaluation criteria. And that included looking at five things. Number one, we wanted to make sure that the standards were covered. And we wanted to make sure that they were aligned and that it was easy to find this alignment within the resource. We also wanted to make sure that there were assessments in place that were going to give us good information so we knew how our students were progressing towards mastery. The other thing we were looking at was the instruction. Was it laid out well? Was it easy for a teacher to follow? You know, a teacher doesn't want to have to dig through this resource and try to find the information. We also looked at the learning tasks. We wanted to make sure that they were application and there were some project-based and engaging activities within the learning tasks. And then we wanted, we looked at the materials to make sure they were kid-friendly. We wanted to make the math books and the things that we were looking at easily digestible for kids. So that was our own criteria. Then, we considered ed reports. Anybody's dishwasher break recently or have to get a new dryer? And you think, oh, my gosh, do I have to really go to Lowe's and Sears and start looking? Maybe I'll just look at Consumer Reports first and find out what's the best bang I could get for my money. And so the Consumer, the Education Consumer Reports version is called ed report. An ed report goes through and looks at these and evaluates all of these tools. And they give us sort of that same thing that Consumer Reports gives us for cars. And so when we looked, we found out that Eureka Math had really high ratings. So all this green you see goes all the way up to 5th grade. So they got some of the highest marks in all of these categories. Remember, I talked about alignment, you know, to the standards and usability. So you could see K through 5, we felt it was really strong. Thanks, Mary. So then, we knew we needed to meet student needs, right? With all of these different pieces. But there's been so much out there on scientific brain research because we hear from lots of families that the new math is so different from how I learned. It's different from how I learned because 20 years ago, well, more than, we'd been teaching math probably kind of similarly for the last 20 years, but when I was in elementary school, we didn't learn it this way. And we have lots of meetings with, not lots of meetings, we have meetings with parents who say, gee, you know, I don't, it's almost become a joke, like, I don't understand the new, the new math. And we wanted to make sure that this new generation of kids was not struggling with math. We didn't want them to inherit that math gene of their parents if they didn't feel like they were strong in math. So we took a look at some of the brain research out there. So we're going to show you a quick video clip of some research that we considered when we were looking for resources.
Another interesting new finding from brain science that's super important for math learning is that brain crossing, going across brain pathways, makes us learn math most powerfully. So what is brain crossing? We know that some brain pathways light up when we think about symbols such as numbers. Other brain pathways light up when we visualize, draw, or estimate with numbers. And visualizing and drawing and estimating are all really important to math. But new research tells us that when we're doing both together, when we're both thinking about numbers as symbols and we're visualizing and drawing the numbers, we're using pathways that connect across the brain. And that brain crossing, drawing and visualizing and using symbols together in math, is the most powerful math learning. You can see some examples here of brain crossing examples when we think visually about numbers and about fractions and algebra. We'll be getting you to do this brain crossing in this week of Inspirational Math.
So we wanted to take into account that, and recognize that kids need to be taught differently than perhaps we were taught so that they can better understand math concepts and math procedures. So that's something that we looked at. We gave, the curriculum committee met and was given two recommendations from the Math Resource Selection Committee. And the board, we are very happy, chose to go with Eureka Math. And we're glad that you did because we love it and we're glad to share it with you today.
And now we'd like to share with you a brief video clip that highlights the development of how Eureka Math began.
So any discussion about education needs to begin with the students. When the standards were first introduced, it was a major transition for everybody. If I'm being honest, I think there was a need for change. We found that there was a need for students to understand why the mathematics worked rather than just, rather than just a process to find the answer. It's the only curriculum that I'm aware of that was written for the standards.
It's also made by teachers. So all of the writers are classroom teachers and they have experience with rigor in the classroom and implementing these best practices.
I'm excited about the direction that Eureka Math is driving math instruction. You know, success this Tuesday in October is not the end goal. Getting my students to graduate high school and move on to college or career is the ultimate goal. And so I think by providing my students with a series of tools and strategies that will allow them to be more successful, not just in my grade-five classroom, but in the years ahead, that does excite me. And I do think that one could say it's a new day in education. Eureka was built after the creation of the new standards, when a group of teachers came together to create a totally new, powerful curriculum, one that harnessed learning from successful math programs all over the world. Eureka's core principle is that students need to know more than what works when solving a problem. They need to understand why it works. Instead of just drills and rote memorization, Eureka Math helps students to experience math and connect it to the real world in order to understand math conceptually, computationally, and in application. Eureka presents math as a story, one that develops from grades pre-K through 12. Eureka Math wasn't retrofitted to meet the new standards. It was born from them. So the standards are seamlessly integrated, not shoved into old textbooks. Now, meeting standards, higher test scores, and better grades are just things that happen along the way. Eureka Math was created by a nonprofit, so we care most about helping students succeed.
So one takeaway you can take from this video clip is that the program itself was created after the standards were written, which means it was born from it and it was created to seamlessly align with the curriculum. Whereas some of the other programs that are older, they had to retrofit their curriculum in order to meet the needs of the standards. So I think that's really important. The other thing to note is that the core principle of this program is the belief that students need to know not only what works, but to be able to communicate and understand why it works. So that's really a big thing with this program. This is a view of a typical lesson for Eureka. So it begins with a fluency practice and then moves to an application problem. Then it goes on to a concept development, which includes a problem set. And finally, a student debrief, which includes a student exit ticket. Now, the exit ticket is a teacher tool that can gauge how the students understood the daily concept development. Each piece individually is so important to the whole. They're like pieces of the puzzle, but when you put them together, it creates rigorous and it creates balanced instruction for our students.
This component provides daily opportunities for students to gain confidence and motivation for continued learning. Why we do the fluencies, we do these for maintenance to really have students stay sharp with the skills, with the learning skills, to have them be prepared for the lesson that we are instructing on that day or that week. And also for anticipatory lessons that are coming up, just to have them make sure that they have their skills down pat. Now, there are different types of fluencies. We do math facts practice. We have skip counting, place value practice. And some of the fluencies include kinesthetic movements. And I want to show you how one of those goes. And I'd like you guys to take part in it. So I'm going to have you guys stand up and do one. This is called the sunrise, sunset counting movement. And it's reviewing counting up to 10 and back down to 10. So we're going to start with the sun rising down here. No, no, from 10. Yeah, none of her is ready.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Can we try sunset?
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Very good. That's what I.
That would be a fluency using.
That would be, yeah. That's one of our primary fluencies that we do. And another one, an intermediate, could be making sure that students know their three multiplication facts. And that could be something as simple as they're getting up and using their movements and maybe doing punches to 3, 6, 9, 12, 15, 18, 19. So very similar to that. And the kids really enjoyed that. And it gets their minds moving along with their math skills. So we have a video clip of a fluency in play in a classroom. And in this particular clip, you're going to see that the teacher is leading students while the students are practicing a skill as a group. So this fluency on here is called, say, 10 counting. And it reinforces place value and prepares students to add 10, to add 210 and then some ones. Ten, seven, good. One 10. One 10, nine. What's this?
Two 10s.
Two 10s. What number makes two 10s? What number?
Twenty.
Twenty makes two 10s. Keep it there, ready? Two 10.
One.
Two 10.
Two.
Two 10.
Three.
Two 10.
Four.
Stop. What number is two 10? Four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. How many 10s are in 24? Look at your rectum rec. How many 10s? Show me with your fingers, how many 10s? Beautiful. How many 1s are in two 10, four or 24?
Four.
Four, ready? We're going. Two 10.
Five.
Two 10.
Six.
Two 10.
Seven.
Two 10.
Eight.
Two 10s.
Nine. Three 10s.
Oh. Three 10s.
And this is the tool that they were using.
And, right, the right rec. So as you can see in this one, it was teacher-led, students were able to practice that fluency together as a whole class while working with the manipulative.
The next part of the lesson is called the application problem. The application problem is about five to 10 minutes. And what you will see, it's really an opportunity for the kids to apply their skills in real-world problems. So it'll give them problems in lots of different ways so that they can apply their learning. So there's two different ways that it's presented. Sometimes it's presented before the concept development. The concept development is the lesson of the day with the new learning. So sometimes it will springboard that. Other times, it follows the concept development as an extension of the lesson. So if you were in a math class during a time when students were doing the application problem, you would see kids possibly using whiteboards. We have special whiteboards over there that the kids use where the red signifies that they're done and they would be working on the white side. And, or they could possibly be working in a math application notebook. So teachers do it different ways, but the kids are working on a problem for about five minutes. And then after that, the teacher brings all the kids together and then they have an opportunity to share their learning. So kids could talk about different strategies that they use to solve the problem and really verbalize all the thinking that was going on in their head while they were trying to solve the problem. So this is an example of an application problem for a grade-one classroom. Taylor and her sister Riley each got four books from the library. Then Riley went back in and checked out another book. How many books do Taylor and Riley have together? Draw and label a number bond to show the part of the books Taylor took out and the part that Riley took out. So a number bond is one of the strategies that the kids are introduced to in Eureka. So this is an example of a number bond right here, just showing the total and the two parts. So you could see this student did the number bond, but then also used tallies and labels to represent their thinking. Where this student over here drew circles to represent Riley and then circles to represent Taylor and also used the number bond strategy. This is an example of a grade-five application problem. Mr. Peterson bought a case, 24 boxes of fruit juice. One-third of the drinks were grape and two-thirds were cranberry. How many boxes of cranberry drinks did Mr. Peterson buy? So if I were the teacher in this case, I would present the problem to the students. The students would sit and work out the problem on their own for about five minutes. The teacher could work with certain individuals that possibly needed extra support during this time also. And then once the students were done, they would come together and come up to the board to present their thinking. So if I were a student in this case, I would come up and say, I knew that Mr. Peterson bought a case of 24 boxes. I'm going to use my tape diagram strategy, which is another strategy that the kids are introduced to, which I'm going to represent here, to show my 24 boxes of fruit juice. Okay, so now I know that one-third of the drinks were grape, so I'm going to label that. Well, first, I'm going to divide it into thirds. One-third of my drinks were grape, and I know that two-thirds of my drinks were cranberry. How many boxes of cranberry drinks did Mr. Peterson buy? So I need to know, how many are those two parts? So first, I know that my total is 24. So now I need to figure out how many each part is. And now I know that each part is eight. So if each C is eight, I know that eight plus eight is 16. So the kids would come up, they would show their learning and show their understanding, but there could be another student that used a different strategy to solve this. So this would be the time when the kids came up to show that. So that all the kids could be exposed to all the different ways that they could solve this problem. Erase it, sorry.
And then the next component of the Eureka Math is the concept development. And that's really where the new learning takes place. The teacher models and guides the students through the concept. Students have an opportunity to turn and talk and try out their learning, and the teacher's there to really help support them during this time. Once they've kind of done the guided practice, students apply their learning in a problem set. They might do that individually or they might have a partner that they're working with. And those assignments are differentiated, so there are must-dos, can-dos, and extensions to help differentiate the learning. Teachers during this time can pull small groups and do enrichment and intervention during this time as well. So here we have an example of a grade-two concept development. And if you look at just the problem here, this might look very familiar to you. It's just a three-digit subtraction problem, which I'm sure most of you learned using just the regular algorithm. Probably didn't understand why you were doing what you were doing. But if you look up at the actual standard, the standard now includes to add and subtract within 1,000 using concrete models, drawings, and strategies placed on place value. So really, in this example here, it's not just about completing the problem, but really understanding why you're doing what you're doing. So if I could model for you, if I was the teacher, I would start off by showing a magnifying glass. So right here, this is the hole, this is the part that we're starting with. And over here, we're going to be working using the place value chart and something called the place value chip model. And this really is the visual side, so talk about the brain crossing. We're trying to represent our thinking using visuals and connecting it back to the numbers. So if I were to represent 647, I have 600s. I have four 10s. And I have seven 1s. So that would represent what I'm starting with, so 647. And the next step is, I would look at the 1s place and I would say, okay, if I have seven 1s, can I take nine 1s away from that? No, I can't. So what I would do is, I would look at the 10s place and I would unbundle or decompose that 10. And now I'm creating 10 1s. And you're constantly switching between the visual and tying it back to the algorithm. So you're able to see the connection between the two. So what I've done here is, I've unbundled one of my 10s and I've now created 17 1s. And that's why we would put the 1 there. It's really representing 10 1s plus the seven that I already had. And then we would also explain to the students, okay, we checked the 10s place. Now that I have unbundled one of those 10s, I have three left. Can I take three from that? Yes. If I move into the hundreds, I have six. I need to take four away. Okay, then I'm ready to subtract. And again, we're moving back and forth between this so that they're able to see that connection. That's really important. So if I'm starting off with my 17 1s, taking away nine, I'm left with eight. I have my three 10s, I take away three 10s, I'm left with zero 10s. I have my 600s, I take away four, I'm left with 200s and 200s. So it's really helping students to be able to see visually connecting that to the algorithm. So we do get to the algorithm, but we spend a lot of time here. Students don't need to be fluent using the algorithm until 4th grade. So we're introducing it in 2nd grade, but really, it's appropriate for them to be using place value strategies until they get to 4th grade. And 4th grade is when the standard algorithm. So the standard algorithm is there. It's just a matter of spending some time here so that they understand why they're doing what they're doing. And the other piece I wanted to share is, I was going to show it to you. In a 2nd grade classroom, a big piece of Eureka really is starting off with manipulatives. So this would be the next step, but they might first start off with these place value chips and they would trade in. So they're physically manipulating and trading in. And then the place value chips go all the way up until 5th grade. So it's a, it's a strategy that they'll use throughout the grade levels.
Okay, so the student debrief brings us to the conclusion of that, that beginning visual that Mary shared that walks you through each component of the lesson. The student debrief is the very end of that lesson. And this offers students an opportunity to solidify their thinking and the new learning. During this time, their classroom teacher is going to engage them in discussion, going to prompt them to think out loud, share their thinking with their peers, and draw conclusions. The benefit for the student is that they get the opportunity to reflect and to reflect on their learning, but also hear the reflection of their colleagues. The benefit for the classroom teacher is that during this time, this is when, as teachers, we're gauging our audience and we're taking note of those reflections that students have to make some choices about the next steps in learning. Who has the concept? Who understood it? Who needs more time for that learning? So the student debrief is brief. It's a small part of the lesson, but it's a very, very powerful part of the Eureka We've walked you through each of the components of the Eureka Math lesson. But one of the things that is a thread throughout all the components is this idea of checking for student understanding. This is a really pivotal part about that. You heard me just describing that in the debrief section, the teacher's able to gauge by student responses, but there are lots of tools available to the classroom teacher to continually gauge the student understanding. For example, I know Mary mentioned when she was discussing earlier that there are exit tickets. This is a snapshot of the learning of the day. The student is going to have an opportunity at the conclusion to work on one practice example that represents the concepts of the day. The teacher has that tangible tool at the end to be able to look at and see for themselves who in the class has mastered the concept and who in fact needs more time. So beyond that, the classroom teacher through each part, of course, has their observational notes. They're watching as the student works through. They're looking at what, what tools they're using, how they're thinking. Students are thinking out loud and the teacher's able to take some observational notes. Beyond that, there's checkpoints for students. So we have the mid-module assessment. That takes, you could think of module and unit as one in the same. As the student works through that and the teacher's engaged the students in learning, it's a check to see if what I've instructed, have they learned? And you can do that before the learning carries so far on that you can intervene. So there's a midpoint check-in. And then there's an end of unit or end of module assessment. That takes place from the midpoint to the end, again, to check in on, I know I've instructed, but have they learned what I taught? And so that is a tool that teachers have through the Eureka program as well. And then, of course, we additionally have district assessments. Those check in on how students are doing with fluency, as we know that that's an important component too. So through that tool bag of exit tickets and observational notes and assessments, the teacher really gets a 360 look at the student's progress. One of the pieces that, as a district, was very important to us is that when we launched the Eureka program, we gave classroom teachers an opportunity to feel proficient and empowered to take this into their classrooms. And that began way back in March of 2017, when we offered a full-day professional development for classroom teachers. And on this first step in the path, that full-day professional development, think of that as really the preview day. Teachers had an opportunity to go in-depth with some of the highlights that we had tonight and really preview, what are the components? What makes up Eureka Math? What are those lessons? They got to start to percolate and think about, what would that look like in their classrooms? By the end of the school year, the materials had come in. Some of the teachers took them home to dig in over the summer and start to see, what is this going to be? Simultaneously, a teacher leader team went and had a two-day training, actually, with Eureka presenters to be on the ground floor to be able to help teachers when they came back for that launch and implementation. When August 2017 rolled around, it was a half-day professional development for classroom teachers. And this was really a continuation of the work that began in March. So if March was the preview, the August day was really about digging in with your colleagues and your team and thinking about what practical pieces needed to happen to make this successful for students. As the school year went on, the commitment was made to stay with teachers. They had the materials, they were in their classrooms, they were working with it. Teachers got the opportunity to come out in grade-level teams, discuss how the pacing was going, talk about and look at the assessments in real time now that they had students taking them. Opportunity for questions and feedback as a team. One of the tools that we found was really helpful was One of the tools that we found was really helpful was, we have Great Minds is a website that works via Eureka. It's a part of the Eureka program. They have videos that have the actual authors of the modules, and in those videos, they present the how and the why. So, they talk about the decisions and the intentions that were made in setting up the program. Helps to empower teachers to understand the decisions that were made behind those visual strategies that you saw tonight, and to know why they're implementing them and how important those are for students. And sometimes, it was even a small nuance that teachers took away from those videos that helped them in their classroom. For example, there was, in one of the kindergarten module videos, they show the number bonds, and they talked about the importance of not just showing it to students in one way, that if you have your students on the carpet and you're building a number bond, and students often have, special, kindergartners have special slots on the carpet, that the authors of the module said how important it was that if a student always sat in the same spot, they would always see the number bond in the same way. And so, they offered to classroom teachers just a small strategy to shift and have students sit in a different place so that they could see this part-part-whole could look different, but the end result was the same. And so, those videos were really powerful tools for teachers to use because it was getting such specific feedback to take with them in their lessons. Additionally, we had, in March, so now, March 2018, teachers have had a full year of working with Eureka Math, and at this time, we were fortunate enough to be able to have Eureka presenters come to the district. And this was, I think everybody on the team could attest to the strength in this professional development, because now that teachers had the Eureka model, they had been working with it, their students were engaged in it, they had an opportunity from the Eureka presenters to hear about how to customize those lessons for their students, how to take a look at the exit tickets and the mid and end-of-module assessments and decide, what is it that my students need? How can I tailor the fluency piece? How can I tailor the application piece to fit the needs of the students that are front of me right here and now? So, additionally, one last thing for the professional development. We are so thrilled that we have now, thank you for reinstating the full-time math coach, Alicia's at the helm of all of this work that we're doing with Eureka and supporting classroom teachers.
And then, finally, after a year of implementation, we sent out a survey, had discussions at grade-level meetings about feedback from the teachers. So, now that you've implemented, what are your thoughts? And we have different responses from the different grade levels, some of them saying, you know, students had a stronger number sense, deeper understanding of the math concepts, they could explain their work more, they're more fluent, they had better confidence, they were exposed to more rigorous content. The Eureka lessons required them to explain more how and why, they were exposed to more complex thinking, they were able to be more flexible in their thoughts. It exposes them to a variety of types of problems, and I love the grade-five quote about, they're more willing to accept productive struggle and to take on that challenge, and I know, and to be able to really push themselves and develop that growth mindset that they can do this, I think was really exciting for us to see.
So, one of the resources that teachers have access to, that they can provide for their parents, is the parent tip sheets, and if you click on that, you can see an example. But these tip sheets go along with each module or each unit as, Alicia had mentioned, or no, was it you? You mentioned, for module, unit, pretty much one in the same, but they go along with topics also, and it's nice to have this for parents when parents, you know, want to see, how can I help, or can I just see what it's like to do a problem like Alicia did on the board or like Kristin did on the board? So, we have these tip sheets, and I do, we did actually copy some for you. We have a packet up here that has samples from K through five, so we do have this for you to see.
So, a couple of things that I wanted to just mention those tip sheets. Something that's really important, because parents might not know what a tape diagram is or a number bond, is that it's not so important that parents know what it is. We want them to be a part of their child's learning, and that's why we are very happy that we have the tip sheets, and they can, they get sent home, and if they reach out to the teacher, they can, the teacher can send other things home. But it's most important that if the child is struggling, not that the parent know how to do it, but that they communicate that to the teacher, so the teacher knows that the child is going home and is struggling. So, that's a really, that's a really key piece that we want to highlight. And to summarize, you saw the researcher from Stanford University in the beginning video talk about the brain crossing, and I think the examples that you saw today, read, write, draw, the more they are manipulating those things and then crossing over to see the numbers, our hope is really that they have a really deep understanding of these concepts before they get up to DOD and before they get to the high school, so that as they get into advanced math, they're not, they have that understanding, and they're not just relying on an algorithm, that they really don't know what it stands for and what it means. So, I started out by saying, this is your process, that we had worked really hard on it. We feel like we looked at the needs of the teachers and the students and the parents, and that we found something that could address all of those. We intend to continue teacher training and professional learning sessions as we move forward, and we're also planning elementary math nights at each of the elementary schools, and they'll be very similar, and you'll get to see these ladies again, because these ladies will be a part of those parent math nights for FER, which will happen after the new year. And then, we're really happy about the math coach, and we feel that that is something that helps in all of those areas. So, thank you very much, and if you do have some questions, we're happy to try and field those for you.
I have a quick question. Why are there the abacus type thing? Why is it half-white and half-white?
It's really to help students be able to visualize the five. So, if you were in, say, a first-grade classroom, we're hoping that they can subsidize and see the five instead of counting one, two, three, four, five. So, it would be recognizing very quickly that that's seven and going from there, and it's really helping them to be able to count by fives and visualize. And that's a big part of the program, is fives and tens, it's really working that way.
So, it sounds like from the teacher sort of comments at the end, that, so you have the kindergartners last year who are going to get this Eureka curriculum all the way through, right? And then, you have kids that started as fourth graders, fifth graders, but it seems like even those kids have benefited, you know, from this program in a pretty significant way. So, I mean, is that true, that it's, it makes a difference no matter at what point these kids are?
Yes, I think, and Alicia, I'm sure you could add to this better than I can, but I know last year, the teachers commented, we can't believe kids are doing this in second grade, you know, we, and they would talk to the sixth-grade teacher, and the sixth-grade teacher was like, I can't wait to get my hands on them, because they're going to be more prepared, you know, perhaps than some of the current students. So, you know, prepared for that level of, a different level of rigor, but...
Yeah, I taught third grade for 16 years, so I've seen the math change through time, and I have to say, last year, the kids, the depth of knowledge that they could produce from their work was just amazing, and I really did see a change, and even their ESPA scores really did go up. I looked at my last three years, and this was the highest year in the last three years. And, you know, not to say that it's the group of kids, but I really do think it had some impact on their learning.
One of the things at our team meeting that really struck me is, there was a quiet teacher who doesn't often share a lot about what happens in his classroom, and he happened to mention that he was struck by the fact that there were audible aha moments in his classroom, that when students were, finally had a connection, he could hear that in the room, and that's pretty powerful.
It's not so much a question, it's more of a comment. I love the way that, because we now really realize that kids learn in all different ways, I love the fact that they grow up, learning, that they can learn in different ways. So, if one doesn't go with them, it's not like, oh, I have to hide that. It's more like, oh, I'll try to figure it out a different way, and it's encouraged. And that confidence is going to go with them through DOD, through the high school, and hopefully, you know, in their career choices or their life choices.
Yeah, I think you saw that, that last comment about productive struggle, that, you know, it's not a dead end, that, you know, there are different ways to get to the answer and solve the algorithm. Maybe I need to try a different strategy, and that's exciting.
And they're all valuable, yes.
I just wanted to thank you, this group, and the ones, the rest of the committee members that, like, actually went through the process. I remember, because I was on the curriculum committee, and, you know, just, I understood that a lot of work went into figuring out what the right resource was, but it's, it was really, you know, that was a huge amount of work, and I really think that we've, you guys came up with a terrific, you know, resource for our kids, and it's, so thank you for doing that.
I think it was very evident when you brought this to the curriculum committee, too, that you were behind Eureka and that you were excited about it. So, I think that made it easier for the board to get on board, and I saw your excitement with it.
Well, I would just add to that, it's not just your excitement, it was, it was really clear that there was a lot of work went into researching and building the standards that you, you as the teachers, knew what needed to be, and all of that was really evident. But thank you for presenting it so beautifully tonight, because this, this was a really fine presentation that lets, allows us to see what actually the program is. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Does anybody else have any comments or anything that they want to say? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Mrs. Sobel, any second? Ms. Fabiani, all those in favor? Thank you very much, we are adjourned.